Okay, we're coming back to open session. We're going to be opening our meeting at 6:30. When we went in to close session, can I get a motion to go back into an open session?
Someone?
Support?
At 7:30. A second? Tracy and Roll Callana.
Tracy McRae?
Yes.
Will you be over?
Yes.
Rob Fennell?
Yes.
Jenny Rodzik?
Yes.
Craig Su?
Yes.
You will go over.
Yep.
Okay, we've gone through some things on our agenda, but we are going to return as an exception to public comments on agenda items at this time. If you are on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please let us know.
If there is anybody that's on the Zoom call and would like to have a public comment, if you could please either raise your hand using the options at the bottom or come off of mute and then we'll allow it to pop. Okay, I see Mark Colley.
Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to come out and give an impairment to you when I stayed through the last council meeting. Just to kind of refresh everybody, I used to live in Meadow Creek time, which I'm trying to enjoy it over there. Absolutely nothing against that, absolutely nothing. Particularly against the expansion. I understand where we're at with the expansion. I think I still would like to advocate for a vinyl fence barrier between, of course, separation, I guess barriers is a little bit of a strong term, a separation between the two subdivisions. They are two, in fact, different subdivisions. I've given some nods in my comments about the last one, about a walkway between the two areas. I'm not sure that's an absolutely terrible idea. I think you could still have a white final, a sub type of fence scene situation from an aesthetics point of view, making of whole values, you know, with that discussion point and still have an opening to allow kids to get to and from the school and whatnot. So, but I appreciate that. And I live at Decorah Park North. And so I'm right on the other side. I was one of the residents that was originally told when I bought 13 or 14 years ago that that was going to be a Decorah Park North expansion from Lombardo. Obviously, I could have went over and looked at zoning and seen what was actually zoned at. But anyways, that's just my opinion. And I really appreciate you taking my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, thanks Barbara. Can you guys hear me? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's something echoing at home. Well, I live here with my properties, one of the properties that corners, still run and Meadow Creek. And I don't, like, I usually have a lot of problems with the fence on one of the sides. And I know if we had some type of sidewalk or something that could lead into traffic that happens when, you know, people are crossing through our yards, it would help. Maybe also some type of fence would help too, you know? But it's just kind of hard to tell, especially if there's no type of way for the other communities to have access to come to the elementary school or the park. So that was one of my concerns for me.
Thank you. Are you all good Barbara?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Harry. Yes, I forgot. About Daniel, Danny Kirkwood, by the way, River Oaks Drive across the street from now, enter school. From my understanding, there's been some changes or something and everything sounds good. To my understanding, that fence has been considered. I think that's a great idea. I applaud the people, Meadow Creek developers, to propose that. The only concern at this point in time is that the, on the east side of River Oaks Drive, where it meets with Salt River Circle South, that intersection there, currently, the, on the east side of River Oaks, it just kind of, the cement kind of trails off into the dirt. It's not really curved off or anything of that nature. I don't know if that's going to be able to enlarge or look, or you guys probably discussed the meeting in closed session, but I don't know whose responsibility that will be. But I hope that the east side of River Oaks gets curved off and, you know, filled in with grass instead of that loose gravel or dirt that kind of fades away into the dirt right now. And then I hope that the sidewalk stretches alongside from north to south to connect Decorah and Decorah North HOAs. Because, I mean, you know, just as a common folk not knowing the boundary lines are, you don't even know where the boundary lines are. And once these last year developed, you're going to have sidewalk all along that whole stretch, except potentially for that gap. So I hope between Meadow Creek or Lombardo, both together, maybe two days, whoever the case may be, whoever's responsible for it, as long as that River Oaks, the east side there gets curved off and a sidewalk gets put in, I'm happy. And I do apologize for everybody who's been involved in this for down at the table and made some decisions. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, if anybody else would like to have a public comment, if you please unmute yourself or use the raise hand function. I know we had a couple of people that joined.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, I do not see any more folks going off of mute to raise their hands.
Okay. All right, we're good.
Yep, looks like we're good.
Okay, we're getting behind to old business, Meadow Creek expansion. As everybody knows, we're here with the site guard, but it's part of the plan approval. All four on the table, as usual, to have anyone voice their concerns and such at this time. Or appreciations. Craig?
Hi, I'm Barbara.
Lucy, you're not in here. Tracy?
I don't have any concerns, but could we maybe bring the public up to speed about where we're at? Or you can continue on.
I don't have any.
Yeah.
I don't.
Do you?
No, I have nothing.
Right.
Jen, I don't even know what you're asking. All I hear is echoing.
I don't know. I'll leave it to someone. My mic is off.
What did you ask Jen?
Do you have anything that you would like to share or bring up without at this time?
No, I'll wait until after they're done with their presentation.
Okay, Meadow Creek, do you have anything that you would like to bring to the table this evening?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Rodzik. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming together this evening. Appreciate the community members, commissioners, village staff and all of this. Thank you for, you know, this special session that you offered to be conducted. And we're hopeful the discussion tonight will conclude with a preliminary site plan approval that'll allow us to move forward into the next approval and design steps. But again, thank you. As you know, this will be our third time in front of you, actually fifth, I think, the couple of months prior to joining, be joining the team. We're hopeful from these meetings that we've satisfied all the review comments today. And I say this only because we really hope that we've shown our genuine partnership with the village, with the community members, and our transparency has, you know, been demonstrated throughout this process. Although not necessarily required than just this past week since we last spoke. You know, some of the folks may not be aware of the audience there, but we have worked hard to address the plant commissions as well as the community's concerns. We are going to move forward. When we move forward with construction and escort data with Lombardo's development team, we will provide a six-foot vinyl fence to separate the expansion from Meadow Creek, from the Decorah Park. That's shown on the new site plan and that'll be on the, on all sides of our development that above Decorah. Additionally, we have coordinated with Lombardo. And I believe, as stated by some of the residents here tonight, pedestrian opening and the fence to allow for the community sidewalks to connect to each other. We think that's important, that, you know, if we provide this fence, then we allow access for children to school, for, you know, neighborhoods to connect to each other. And then hopefully in the hopes that, you know, folks aren't kicking down fences when they have access and ability to go through two fences. It's illogical to us. And then also, as stated in today's letter from the fire department, which we appreciate them, you know, turning around so quickly and reviewing. There was a couple of comments that were brought up this past week since we last met. We've satisfactorily responded to those recent requirements from the fire department. And I think it was also brought up in this meeting last week and requested. We will now be providing two connection points from our existing community into the expansion area, which I think is a positive thing. We support that. You know, we've got that included and shown on our drawing. It was not easy, but again, we think we responded to that in part and did our part. And then although these changes may not have been required, as we all know, the property that we're expanding onto is a zone for manufacturing housing by right. We believe these changes are the right thing to do. With an approval tonight, we can all, I think, agree that the process here has worked. And we can applaud, you know, the planning commission as well as community members for coming out, voicing their concerns. Hopefully, we've addressed them. I'd be happy to walk through any of the changes on site plans. AEW has been gracious enough to bubble them. I don't know if that's necessary, but some of the ones that, you know, stick out in my mind again are the six-foot tall vinyl privacy fence that's shown around the perimeter. We've also added the sidewalk connection. And I believe it will address one of the community members' comments that we should be installing a sidewalk along the eastern edge of River Oaks Drive there. And I believe that should clear up that kind of, that road that dead ends right into our property if it went, you know, this project moves forward. And then also, we've created those two connection points, removed the unnamed street to be named later. We've done that now, so that would no longer be an issue. But again, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to run through any questions. We think they're pretty straightforward. We try to be as transparent as possible through this process. And overall, you know, we look forward into our investment within the community of New Haven. You know, and we think that, you know, what we bring to the table, I think if you were to tour, we'd be happy to have anybody tour through our community. As, you know, a resident stated earlier, Meadow Creek is a wonderful place to live. We think we will do this development properly. We think the community members within our community will appreciate it. We're hopeful that the planning commission recognizes our efforts to date and will allow us to move into the next design phase, approval phase, with an affirmative vote tonight. So we appreciate again everybody coming together so quickly, turning this around. It was much appreciated. We thank you for helping us keep the process rolling. If there's any questions, please, I'd be happy to field them or go through the site plan in more detail or any of the other submittals that we've provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Four on the table, Craig, question?
Okay.
No question, no? Mr. McCrory?
No, thank you.
No questions?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Um, my biggest thing, and I appreciate the things that you've done, Mr. Boyle. Actually, I had a really good friend named Mike Boyle. When I first saw that, I thought maybe that was going to be you because he moved away. But my biggest concern is the sidewalks. I think the people that locate in the selling point of this, oh, can you hear me?
Can you hold on a second?
You know what, Rob, if you can bring the microphone a little bit, your desk microphone, the actual desk microphone.
This one?
That one is that one.
I'm sorry, Mike, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. First, I wanted to thank you for the things that you have added. But my biggest, hugest concern left is the sidewalks on both sides of the street. In the past, the developments here have agreed to the sidewalks on both sides in 1997 for the first Meadow Creek. And then the expansion that came to us in 2004, the final plan on that, which never was acted upon, but it had sidewalks on both sides of the expansion. I think your biggest customer here is going to be with that opening and right there to the school is going to be parents, people with kids, that they can walk their kid to school. I mean, for Decorah Park, I think that's been the biggest selling point is that you're located next to your school. And the pure safety of, if they're blocking the school, you know, you're asking them to cross at corners. But if they don't have no sidewalk in front of their house, they have to cross in the middle of the street. I would really, I believe we've got to have sidewalks to keep this a safe place for our kids. A big priority with the village has been to create sidewalks in our community over the years and participate in safe routes to schools. And I think it would be a bad thing for us to say, no, we don't need sidewalks. And then, A, we applied for a grant. Well, you didn't require them there and you want our money. So it makes us harder to complete those projects if it doesn't look like it's a serious issue. And I hope you can add that, please. I do have some other questions, but just kind of to clean up on what you said. You're doing the fence and then Ms. Barbara mentioned that she's in the corner by Quail Run. Are you going to connect that white fence that you're putting up to the Quail Run white fence that's there? So there's no opening in that corner?
Correct, yes. If you look at the site plan, I believe the vinyl fence that's shown is existing in gray lettering is the existing Quail Run.
Okay, I can't, I can't see it from my turnout, it's so small. But cool, thank you. Because I'd hate for her corner house to be the new route for Quail Run. Oh, okay, thank you. Our clerk had a bigger problem. Also, when the fence went up for Quail Run, a big loophole with it, in my opinion, was that they put the fence like a foot and a half above the ground. Could you please put that fence near the ground? I mean, it sounds ridiculous that I mentioned this to you, but it's literally a foot and a half above the ground. So you just crawl under it. So when you put it in, please put it on the ground. I don't know why I would have to, why that wasn't just common sense back then, but it wasn't done. And I'd hate to see it done again. They, the fence, pretty useless and everybody had to put, what do you call it? Chicken wire and wood and all sorts of, you know, trashy looking stuff to keep their yard from being a walking or crawl-through area. And I didn't, these lights, that was another concern of mine was, could we do a shorter light, a pole light? It's like 12 feet, straight pole. Maybe it's even cheaper than doing the 25 footer? Because it seems like the lights that you're putting on Beechwood, all those houses basically over there are Colonials in Decorah North. So those 25-foot lights are going to be lighting up their backyard and their windows. You know what I'm saying? It wants the, because they're going to be above your units. You know what I'm trying to say?
Unfortunately, this is an preliminary site plan approval, so I don't, we're not into the detailed engineering phase of it yet. So we haven't done a photometric study. I'm sure that would all resolve itself when we have the engineers focus on that portion of the project.
I figured you were because you put the light in your, in your plan, the 25-foot over the road light.
We, we are trying to do our best to get through the site plan, preliminary plan approval, so we can get engineers around.
I hope you look at that so that these people don't have, I mean, they're used to having woods. I don't want to fill their back of their houses with lights. I have that problem. It drives me crazy. My neighbor has floodlights shining on my house, but it's neither here nor there. Well, I got a bunch, but my big issue is the sidewalks. Is that something you can do for us, is put the sidewalks on both sides of the street, please? Because I've cut you loose.
At this time, I think we've created the site plan that we're already submitting, requesting approval for.
So you don't want to, you don't want to put the sidewalks in?
Right now, I think we're set with the site plan that we've submitted so far, sir. We've tried to be more than accommodating. I cannot commit anymore at this point. We have, we have, as I walked in such throughout and we believe that they, that they are.
But your past history at Meadow Creek is to put, was to put, I mean, here's the site plan. There are sidewalks on both sides. 2004, I mean, not to really see what I'm pointing to you, but I'm not making it up. There are sidewalks on both sides of the street. I don't want to nitpick you to death, but, I mean, there's other issues. But the biggest one is to keep kids safe. And I think everyone can agree that that's, that's worth it. That we need to keep kids from walking in the street. And especially if they're going to school and it's dark. Plus, you want to teach them to do what's right. I think that your selling point here is going to be, which is good for you, it's good for us, it's good for everybody, is that when they buy there, their kids can walk to school. Everybody, most people grew up in that atmosphere. I grew up in that atmosphere. That's why I moved to Decorah Park. So my kids can walk to school like I used to do. In the world of mega schools now and the busing, that's not, not even normal anymore. I guess if you're, you think that's, that's too much, then I guess I've got other questions. Visitor parking? How would you plan to address visitor parking for the new subdivision? For the new expansion?
It is shown on the plan with the driveway that's provided in front of all houses.
There's two spots at each house, right?
Julia, you ready to help?
Yeah, okay, so there's, the drive was actually long enough for three spots. The requirement from the level of home commission act is that two spots are provided per house plus one extra guest space for every three houses. Three houses. What we have done is that we provide one to share between three. We've actually made the driveways long enough to accommodate three cars per house. So effectively, each house has a guest space.
Does that still meet the requirement to put it on top of each other like that?
Yes, it actually stays the requirement.
Because you're saying everybody gets a guest spot?
Correct.
Is there, where you're putting your, the sheds, are you putting that slab of cement down when they, as part of the original build? So that it's there when people come? Or is that something they got to buy? The shed slab?
Mike, I can answer that as well. No, that is built per lot as each property is sold or each home is built.
So when you put in the streets, you put in the foundations and put in those things all at the same time? Or you wait until you've got a trailer to go on there?
You wait until a home is built on it. But it is included, take a lot off the map as an extra, you don't take extra one.
And is the sidewalk put in at the time that the curbs and the streets are put in?
Yes.
So those don't come after that? You mentioned the sidewalk completion on the east side of River Oaks. Does that include the adding the curb cut and removing the couple of feet of street, I guess you'd call it?
Yeah, I think the sidewalk would effectively close that curb. So the sidewalk would not be at any elevation, so it'd be a raised curb there so that cars cannot turn into that direction heading towards Meadow Creek expansion. I think was the intent of the question.
I just wanted to make sure it's finished off.
Yeah, we will, I can assure you, we will try and keep our fences to the ground and complete our construction details. We do take pride in, you know, in trying to complete the construction in the right manner. You know, I, moving on, I know the ways and means of creating the sidewalk. I don't know if that's 100% worked out in terms of timing on, you know, that gets all done ahead of time. Or if we, as we build out our community, similar to how Decorah is, we build our sidewalk ahead of time so we don't then set our houses over the top of flatwork and then have to re-tore them after we've crushed them. So we try and think of sequence and then do it properly. So I don't want to overcommit to that in a preliminary site plan approval. Just wanted to point that out.
And are you putting in some kind of construction entrance into this property from 27 across that property? Or how is all the construction vehicles getting into this to excavate and?
We will adhere to all these swift requirements, the stormwater best practices that are required during the more diligent, detailed engineering efforts.
Did, how does that work, God?
They will apply for solar and that will be where the number of access will be. And I assume it's going to be from 27.
Okay. I just don't want it to have to be the people living on River Oaks to experience all of that going to their, their house.
No, there is no access from River Oaks.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't want everybody else to serve. I really want the sidewalks and I won't vote in the affirmative for it at this time. I don't think we can be more diligent or more important to provide kids with a safe route to get to the school than to have sidewalks in front of their homes. I'm done with questions.
Anybody else?
Julia, can you confirm, Rob, that it's a right access? I'm hoping for River Oaks.
All honesty, remember, we haven't even thought of that part yet. That's usually an area that's sort of open. I don't know. Never even looked at that part.
Okay, this looks like the condition issue that posed to the mission issue.
Is that a conflict road? Is River Oaks a conflict road?
It is.
And I'm guessing you don't want to run out that equipment through your private roads either. I mean, that's why I'm looking for a construction entrance through all that empty property on 27.
Their parcel is not, you see, I spoke to Susha.
Their parcel is not...
Well, that property is owned by Lombardo.
Not owned by Decore.
What's that? Please discuss that.
Are you good, man?
I'm good.
I guess I have one thing. Unit 446, 447. Setbacks to River Oaks Drive. How far are those setbacks?
Okay, I imagine they're over there. They are approximately 15 feet. 125.
You're talking about the property boundary. What about two River Oaks, the actual curb?
On the actual curb, they're about 32 feet.
32 feet, 50, but maybe 50. Right-of-way boundaries, so I think they'll be within 10 feet. I think it'll be outside of 10.
Yeah, I guess... Just for reference, right-of-way line is typically one foot past the sidewalks. When a sidewalk is in the right-of-way, one foot past that is typically where the right-of-way line is. From the 15-foot dimension that I gave you from home to the property line, so essentially it's 60 feet to the existing sidewalk.
So we know that homes build on one foot from, or even 15 feet from the sidewalk. I mean, we push them back farther than that, right? Homes have been built? I'm sorry, sir, but the homes that we... You know, when we build a home here, and that's, you know, specifically these ones on there, they're not one foot or even 15 feet from the sidewalk. They're further back setbacks than that, right? Wouldn't it dent you?
Mobile Home Commission Act, we only have a 10-foot setback, so we can be as close as 10 feet.
The concerns are there, this is... The site yard or the line of property. So this commission is concerned about that meeting, the proper setback being a... River Oaks being a public road, and now the side yard is considered a front yard. So it's too close. That's what Rob's saying.
I'm looking more... Okay. Actually, I'll have our attorney step in, just so he's got it for us.
Okay, Julie, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right. The commission's concern is, under Rule 125.1944, which talks about setbacks from property boundary lines, you're saying 10 feet. That's subsection 1. Subsection 2 of the rule says, "Homes, permanent buildings, facilities, or any other structures that abut a public right-of-way shall not be located less than 50 feet from the boundary line."
I'd like to clarify, is that in... Are you referring to Mobile Home Commission Act, or are you referring to the requirements of the village?
No, I'm referring to the rules promulgated underneath the Mobile Home Commission Act, which are incorporated into the act as referred to by...
I will have to look at that in more detail to be honest.
Mr. Cullen, could you repeat that one more time, please, sir?
Hey, talking to... Hey, talking to Julie.
Mr. Cullen, could you... Yeah, could you repeat that one more time, please?
Yeah, so Rule 125.1944 of the administrative rules, which you can... I mean, I assume you guys have looked at it and you can see it. It's on page 65, right? So the setback that Julie's talking about with the 10 feet, that's for any... Anything that doesn't abut a public right-of-way. Subsection 2, it says, and I quote, "Homes, permanent buildings, and facilities, or any other structures that abut a public right-of-way shall not be located less than 50 feet from the boundary line." So the commission is just concerned that those last two sites were not... The last two that are too close to the public right-of-way and violate those rules.
Like I said, we'll have to do a more detailed look at that. And if that is true, the true requirement, then we will modify the site plan to make sure that we comply with the Mobile Commission.
Okay, with that, I guess, you know, as just a request...
Is the condition here that says we have to comply with that specific rule? We intend to. We wouldn't object to that being a condition of complying with the code.
With that, if that does affect like your lots 446 and 447, you know, if you could consider making that part of green space for, you know, just a more visual presence from Metal Creek for view preparation, that would be appreciated.
All honesty, speak for Michael. We'll definitely take into consideration. Don't make any commitment to it, obviously, but we'll take into consideration. We'll definitely comply with all the requirements on us.
Shaun, is there any... Because there's a requirement here, is there a way for the village to say, "We're allowing it," or "giving it a variance," or some allowable way to do it?
Certainly, because, I mean, this is within the purview of the state in those rules, so they're the ones that'll catch it. I mean, as long as we have it on the record here, I think that's sufficient.
But can we say it's okay? That it doesn't bother us that it is there?
Because this is just a preliminary plan. Stay away from that most of the time.
Maybe we can trade that for sidewalks?
Anybody else?
I'll take them.
Okay. I guess, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'm good.
Shaun, I've got a touch base on the agreement, or do you want me to do it?
No, I don't think we need to worry about that. We're fine. I mean, are you okay with it or no? Do we need to discuss it?
Well, the two concerns that we put in our recommendation letter that we want the developer to sign recorded storm, discharge, maintenance, and access agreement between Metal Creek and Decore Park in order for Phase 5. That's for people reviewed after we've met the village.
And my understanding is it's in the works. Are I correct, Mike, Julie?
Yes, sir.
And that would also include the whole harmless language?
I mean, if you're willing to do that, obviously, right? But the whole harmless is not in case.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Shaun, do you have anything you'd like to review that?
Well, I believe everything was addressed. I think the sidewalks, the slow speed potential setback. The situation with rural Decore Road right-of-way. Wow, there's an error, sorry. Road right-of-way. But yeah, I think we're all set.
Rob?
I see Dan's here from the fire department. Is the new... Have you seen the plan with the new turnaround in it?
All right.
And is that enough for your vehicles to maneuver there?
Yeah, we need to stay in those, have to be too much oil. Creating the nerve hole are concerned or something like that.
Okay. This is... And it's on the record at this point that... Yeah, you got it, yeah. That they see it.
Okay, before I set motion in order.
So I will make a motion for the preliminary plan to the petitioner for the Metal Creek Expansion. I want to add a few caveats to it. And that's they have agreed to add a six-foot final fence with a five-foot height at the right-of-way at the connectivity sidewalk. They are coordinated with Lombardo for the connectivity sidewalk. They're going to meet the 50-foot setback required by the state abutting a public right-of-way. And they are going to meet the village engineer's request that's previously submitted. Did I cover everything? Can anyone think of anything?
Just... Sorry, specifically, did you include lots 446 and 447?
So I'll go backwards, meet the 50-foot setback required by the state abutting a public right-of-way at lots 446?
446 and 447.
446 and 447.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Did you...
Oh, sorry. Any questions on the motion?
In your motion, did you want to include the sidewalk completion and the curb cut completion and fence connection? And Quail Run, I mean, they're mentioned by him that they're going to do it, but do you want to make that part of your motion?
I think the completion really falls on the village because that would be our job, right, to make sure at administrative level that they're completing the project once everything's done. And that, I mean, if you want that mentioned, we can throw that in there. But I think it's important, really, that's our job.
Well, it's our job to make sure they do what they say they're going to do.
Absolutely, that's my point.
That's why I like your motion as far as what you added, too. And that those are just items that...
Right. So the idea that they are going to complete the project as submitted, we're ways from, well, you know, in that right now.
We can't see on yet, no one's... Kind of racial hat. I can't really tell if that line is just a property boundary line or if it's a fence at Quail Run. Oh, I can see it real good here. Thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate that post. Thank you. It was a good concern of mine that Barbara... I don't want Barbara's house to be a pathway from Quail Run and...
Do you like him with that trophy or...
Good. Good time.
Any other questions on the motion? Okay, roll call.
Tracy Bonkowski?
Yes.
Lucy Gilbert?
Yes.
Rob Canell?
No.
Jenny Bravitz?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Steve Fizell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Could you please note in the minutes, my objection is that I don't think we're... My matter is safety in the sidewalks. Please.
I'd just like to say thank you at this time to Metal Creek for, you know, meeting us on a lot of our requests. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you all for the hard work and all the effort put forth. And thank you for having us meeting today to keep us rolling. We really appreciate it. Look forward to the project. Thank you.
The only thing I'd add is that, if at all possible, we can get a copy of the minutes when they are available, just so we have it for all of us. Okay, great. Thank you again.
Okay. Moving on, we have our planners report, which... We're good. Public comments on non-adjusted IOs.
So at this time, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself, and we will acknowledge you to be able to have your public comment. Chairwoman, I'm not seeing any raise hands or unmutes.
Call from the table. Anyone? I guess I just wanted to say this for those listening still. Just for clarity with the role of the plan commission. The role of the plan commission is to check boxes and to ensure that when people come before us, that we meet the requirements, that they meet the requirements of the site plan. And once they do that, our first one is really don't have a place. They check the boxes, they meet our engineering requirements, our legal requirements, our planning requirements, and our safety requirements. Then they have met all the requirements necessary for approval. That's all I know. Anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn at 8:17.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.